With that, we're going to move on to announcements and presentations, and we have quite a few. I'm going to ask Joanne if she would be as so kind to read our first two items, Items A and B, under the announcements, please.
Good evening. Community Services Department has several upcoming special events. The Last Concert at the Rotary Pavilion in San Bruno Park will be on Friday, September 27, 2019, at 6:00 p.m. The concert will be followed by the Family Overnight in the Park, showing the free movie Ralph Breaks the Internet. For more information about these events, please visit the City of San Bruno calendar at www.sanbruno.ca.gov/calender. In addition, the Friends of the San Bruno Library will hold their semi-annual book sale on Saturday, October 5, 2019, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. in the library's downstairs community room. Thousands of books will be available for sale. Bring your own bag and fill it with books for just $7. All proceeds benefit the library. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Item C, which is the Legal Women Voters will host a candidates forum right here at the San Bruno Senior Center on Tuesday, October 1, from 7 to 9:00 p.m. Item D, present proclamation declaring October 6 through the 12th as National Fire Prevention Week in the City of San Bruno. There's a lot of whereas's, but we have young people here. I know no need to get to do homework tonight, so we will abbreviate this and let our chief talk. But the 2019 Fire Prevention Week theme is "Not Every Hero Wears a Cape. Plan and Practice Your Escape." Effectively serves to remind us that we need to take personal steps to increase our safety from fire. Now therefore, I recoe Medina Mayor of the City of San Bruno to hereby proclaim the week of October 6 through the 12th as Fire Prevention Week. And I'll bring this over to the chief.
Thank you, Mayor Medina, members of the council. And so you didn't get tongue-tied on that, but I probably will. So this year's theme is "Not All Heroes Wear Capes," so Plan Your Escape. And that's what we're encouraging all residents to do this year is get home with your family, talk about what you would do in the event of a fire, plan that escape, and practice it. When that smoke detector goes off, what are you going to do? And that's also the theme for our 66th Annual Fire Poster Award Contest. So all the elementary schools got a poster delivered, I think, last week. We picked all those posters up. We'll be judging those posters. Students were asked to do, in fact, that plan, their escape theme, and actually practice it with their family and give us the date and the time and sign, verify that you did practice that plan. We'll be hosting, or actually, we'll be going to the schools during Fire Prevention Week to do assemblies so that we can give out those awards and also present fire information, prevention information to the students. We have some information on how to do that plan as well that we'll be passing out to all of our elementary school students. Additionally, we will be hosting our annual open house on Saturday, October 12, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. At Station 51, we invite all residents to come by, visit with your firefighters, learn about fire prevention, some emergency preparedness. We'll do some demos. We'll do tours of the station, and you can get a hot dog and a hamburger and probably something cold to drink. So we welcome everybody to come by on the 12th. Thank you very much.
Thank you, chief. With everyone's permission, I'd like to go ahead and go down to skip E, but right now, go to F, to receive the presentation from the 2019 San Bruno Sister City Exchange delegation on their visit to Narita, Japan, that occurred in July of this year. And of course, as we said, they're here and they're folks, and so I think it'd be nice if we go ahead and let you and them make their presentation.
Sure. Javon Grogan, City Manager. Let me just say that it was my pleasure to attend Narita this year, which is the 29th year of San Bruno's sister city relationship with Narita. And so I was the delegate for the City of San Bruno, and I was able to accompany 10 lovely kids from Parkside Middle School and two teachers, Danielle Quinn and James Stewart. And here tonight, we have Principal Smith that will lead the presentation. But next year will be the 30th anniversary of our sister city relationship. They're really looking forward to having members of the city council attend. It is an amazing, amazing, amazing opportunity, not just for members of the city council and staff, but it is an amazing cultural exchange between the City of San Bruno and the City of Narita. I'm sure Parkside will tell you all about it, but they're an airport city. We're near a major airport. We have so much in common, and there were many times that, albeit a dominant culture difference, but you could sort of close your eyes and you're in the U.S., and we have so much in common. It was also my pleasure to host a number of, four delegates from Narita that came to the City of San Bruno early in 2019. And so it's a wonderful opportunity where they come here and we go there each year. And next year will be 30 years, so we're hoping to continue it even better and stronger. So with that, I'll introduce Principal Smith.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Grogan. Mayor Medina, members of the council, and City Manager Grogan. Good evening, and thanks for having us. I'm Don Smith. I'm the principal of Parkside Intermediate School. And I would like to introduce, as you met earlier, our interim superintendent, Dr. Sharon Camberg, our board president, Terry Chavez, two of our dedicated teachers who oversaw the Narita program, Mr. James Stewart and Ms. Danielle Quinn, one of a few. And they were the advisors who worked with our students on the sister city exchange, put in a lot of hours outside of their classroom, outside of their duties as a teacher, to make sure this happened. Thanks for the opportunity this evening for Parkside students to share their experiences from their summer exchange visit in Narita. Special thanks to City Manager Javon Grogan, Joanne Magrini, and Daniel Brewer in Community Services, and the San Bruno Community Foundation for their support of the Narita Exchange. Since 1990, hundreds of students from Parkside Intermediate School have benefited from San Bruno's sister city relationship with Narita, Japan. Each year, students and educational leaders from Narita visit our city, and they visit Parkside as well. In turn, a delegation from Parkside in the city visit Narita. Parkside and Narita students have enjoyed the cultural exchange while establishing friendships that transcend the thousands of miles separating them. The mission of sister city relationships is to promote peace through mutual respect, understanding, and cooperation. One individual, one community at a time. These are the tenets of Parkside's philosophy, that our students will embrace diversity and become better positive contributors to our society. You will now hear from several who benefited from this once-in-a-lifetime experience.
That's your cue.
Yeah.[501.16][501.16][laughter]
Come on. You guys can go over to the podium. That's great.
Hi, my name is Jared Salazar. My experience in Japan was amazing. We did a lot of good cultural events in which we bonded with our delegates. We visited many major places in Narita, such as Nats and one of the museums. We also visited City Hall many times, and we got to see a lot of the stuff that happened. We got to we got to experience one of the annual events in Narita in which they pulled a shrine from one of the temples to City Hall and back. Thank you.[609.20][609.20][laughter] So before I start, I'd like to say thank you to all the chaperones and all the people who were involved with this program, as they made like huge sacrifices for this and for my benefit and for everybody else's benefit. And I had like, so to start off, my experience in Narita was really fun, and I will never forget it. And Narita has like really rich culture, and through this program, they really immersed me into this culture by just, they, our week was action-packed. They, we, oh no, we were taken to so many different places, like two temples, like many different museums, and we had a lot of fun. And the people in Narita are really nice. They were willing to give us everything. We, whatever we asked them, they would give it to us. And we had to limit ourselves. We had to be careful that they wouldn't give us, like, we're careful what we would say. Otherwise, they would just give us something super expensive, and we don't want them to do that, because we want their wallet to stay full. And one of my favorite activities was especially the Giyuan Festival, which I thought we were just going to pull the huge shrine thing called the dashi around the temple, but turns out it was across the city and up hills and stuff. And it was, I had tons of fun, and I was so dead tired after it. It's a massive shrine. And especially my partner here was, had, so our host family offered to take us to a restaurant, and he was so tired, he basically slept the entire day, the next day. And so, and my host family was incredibly nice. The parents, or at least the moms, were incredibly, had incredible skill in cooking.[757.32][757.32][laughter] Like, when we went to a restaurant, they said, "We could eat at home." But, and after like the first few days of them cooking for us, I would be excited for eating at home, because they could cook whatever. And I had, and they gave me, they showered me with gifts. I had problems packing. And yeah, I really enjoyed this program. I hope this program continues. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Tegan Brooks, and I'm one of the Narita delegates. The first thing I noticed about Narita was how clean and beautiful the city was. I liked visiting the school and taking the art class there. I also loved visiting the Dejangji Temple and making the rice cake. I liked getting to meet the new people, such as my delegate and her siblings. The people in Narita are very happy and kind. This program is a good experience, because it teaches you a lot about other cultures. You make new friends and learn about their home lives compared to the life in America. I hope this program continues for my brother Bryce, so that he can have the same wonderful experience as I had. Thank you.
Before I start, I would like to thank anyone and everyone who was involved in helping create this program, because I had an amazing experience in Narita. I am one of the 10 delegates that went to Narita in July. And it was incredible. Narita itself is such an interesting city with amazing people and history, and I was astounded by the kindness and creativity in all of the people that I met. And I enjoyed all of the places we went, such as the festival where we got to pull the dashi, and the school where we got to, where I was introduced to kendo for the first time. And so I hope this program continues, because it gave me such an amazing cultural experience. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Santiago Moreno, and I want to tell you about my amazing experience that I had in Narita, Japan. On the first day, we went to an Edo period town, and it was so amazing, because I felt like I just traveled back in time to the Edo period, and I just learned all this new information. And that's thanks to our tour guide, who was just like an encyclopedia, full of information. After that, we went to go show off our dance to our delegates. We really worked hard on the dance, and it really paid off. But I feel like the best thing about that day was going to eat with our host family, because they showed us around Japan, and I felt really welcome when they took us around, because they gave us like a personal tour, and I felt really touched. On the next day, we went to Daishon Temple. It was really amazing seeing all those beautiful statues and everything. I really learned a lot about Buddhism through meditation and activities. And then after, after that, we went to Nihong Automobile College, Nats. There, we were, showed the process of making cars, which was really cool and really detailed. But the best part about that college, they let us ride in the cars, and it was super But the next day would be the most exhausting. The reason was, we had to pull a giant shrine to City Hall. I was not ready for that. It was super heavy, uphill, downhill. We were so happy when it rained. But, so I come back from the pulling the shrine, and then we go back, and then we pull it again, me and my partner Jesus, for over an hour and a half. We don't know when it's going to end. We feel like it's a mental test or something, but it was super fun, because I realized that the whole Narita community got together to celebrate as one community, and that's what I want San Bruno to be. Like the Posey Parade, but last till like 12:00 a.m.[1087.64][1087.64][laughter] But the next two days, we spent with our host families. So me and my partner Jesus, we went to a place called Akiba Bara, which was super fun. There was so many activities to do, and our, I could tell our delegates were tired, but they wanted to show us around, so I really appreciated that. The next day after that, we went to Tokyo Tower and went to go see all the stuff that Tokyo had to offer. It was super, it was really big and intimidating, but it was really fun, because inside there's a little amusement park. We spent three hours in there. It was really fun. But the next day, I feel like that was really seeing Japanese culture, because we went to their junior high school, where we got to interact with kids our own age, eat with them, laugh with them, and talk about life with them. And I felt like, well, the world is really big. While I'm sleeping, someone's going to school, getting ready, and doing homework, and I, my mind was blown. But after, after after that, we had to leave. It was the saddest part of the trip, honestly. I felt like I was leaving a part of myself in Japan. But with leaving myself, I also brought back a knowledge and culture back with me, so I can share with my family and with the San Bruno community. I think we should continue this relationship to educate more, more Parkside students about Japanese culture and life. Thank you.
My name is Jesus Meza. The Narita Exchange Program was a memorable and fascinating experience, where we got to spend time with two people across the world in Japan. The two delegates my partner and I hosted were Kosuke and Yusuke, who both like to play sports and video games. They first visited San Bruno and stayed at my house, and for the next couple of days, we bonded doing activities such as going to the beach, walking across San Francisco, and even watching Giants game. We also shared common interests such as video games and liking hamburgers. In July, we made the trip to visit them in Japan and see their lifestyle. Both of the families were very welcoming and even invited us to play family games such as cards. We also got to meet the delegates' friends who were welcoming too, and talked to us about the trip and what we liked about Japan. We went to temples, arcades, school, and even a made cafe. Not only were the people kind and respectful, but they always made sure we were comfortable and talked to us about our experience. I would recommend this trip to any eighth grader who had the opportunity, as it's not only fascinating, but helps build friendships where you wouldn't expect.
Hi, my name is Lana Feldman, and I'm one of the delegates who visited Japan this July. It was a really great experience. I met lots of different people. Their families were amazing. They're so welcoming and so kind all the time. We did many different activities, like visit temples, pull a shrine. We went to Tokyo Disneyland, Tokyo Skytree, went to a few museums, and it was really great. It was a really fun experience, and I learned a lot about their culture, which was really interesting. We, it was also really great food all the time. I recommend this trip to anyone in Parkside or, yeah, anyone in Parkside, because it was really great learning about their culture and meeting these two amazing families and spending their time with them, and just being in Japan. It was a really great experience. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jasmine Huerta, and I am really thankful that I got to get this experience, because I got to make new friends with a great family, with my, both the families, and I got to try new things I never had before, like octopus. I also went to the world's largest statue and got to stand in its chest. It was so cool. And then I also went to a place in Tokyo where it had an indoor amusement park with a roller coaster inside. I would definitely recommend this to everyone I meet, because it's such a great experience, and I definitely would want to go back again. And I also want my sister to enjoy this experience too, for when, if she goes to Narita. Thank you.
So I just want to say, I learned so much about each and every one of the Parkside kids, and it was an amazing opportunity for me, being a new city manager, getting to know a whole different facet of the community. And so thank you for those eight days we shared, and all of the gifts we brought back. I dolled them out to members of the city council, but I want the City of San Bruno to know that we took over five suitcases of gifts to pass out to various people, and people are walking around Narita now with San Bruno Change, San Bruno note pads, and special gifts from us. And it's just an amazing experience, an amazing cultural exchange, and I can't tell you how many times we said, "There is more than unites us and divides us, and we have to continue programs like this." We have to have opportunities for our kids to be exposed to another culture. And this program comes at a great cost. One of the things that I'm excited about is that we were able to purchase the tickets early this year to cut down on some of the cost, and we are constantly working for additional funding, and we can't let this night go by without thanking the San Bruno Community Foundation that stepped up for the second year to give this program a grant. And the grant application is due tomorrow, and we will be applying again for a third year of funding to support this very valued program, in addition to the money that the city council allocates each year, because the City of San Bruno covers the hotel bill. And it's our commitment to the schools, and it's our commitment to our youth, and thank you for everything you do.
So first and foremost, to the students who went and represented San Bruno in your school, and you all did a great job. I will tell you, your idea of having the Posey Parade go till midnight, or the Community Day in the Park, the police chief may have something to say, but we can always look into that. But to the teachers and principal, I think this is a program, obviously, that is reaching its 30th year, and I can remember being back in Parks and Recreation when, used to, one of my jobs was to help facilitate that, as the current Parks and Recreation Department does. And it was very memorable, something that I've always enjoyed, and I think back to Bob Marshall, Sr., our former elected mayor, who is very instrumental in really believing and supporting this program, and it has lasted these 29 years. And it's a real dedication and commitment that everyone gives, at all levels, from the educators to the school district, the school board, the city, the community foundation, parents, of course, parents, and your commitments, hosting when the students come here. So on behalf of the council, all of you did a great job. Thank you for getting up to the mic. Thank you for representing San Bruno, and if we had our way, we would tell you, "You don't have to go to school tomorrow and no homework," but that probably won't go over well.[1659.32][1659.32][laughter] So, but anyway, I want to thank you for your presentation, and thank you for representing San Bruno and your school so well, as you did in Narita, Japan. Thank you very much.[1670.24][1670.24][applause] Okay, so everyone, please, you're dismissed.[1681.52][1681.52][laughter] Please feel free. I know you've got other things to deal with and homework. We're going to go ahead and now move to, back to Item E, and that is to receive the annual presentation from the Senior Citizen Advisory Board. And we'll just wait just a sec.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Dorothy Carmichael, and I am the chairperson for the Senior Citizens Advisory Board, and I will be presenting our 2019 annual report this evening. The mission of the board is to provide input and make recommendations for implementation of education, recreation, literacy, artistic, and social activities for citizens aged 50 and over to contribute to their quality of life. The board receives monthly reports of programs and lunch participation, senior center attendance, and information and referral requests. There are seven voting members on the Senior Citizens Advisory Board, five at large, and one representative from AARP, and one representative from the Nutrition Side Council. The members are Dorothy Carmichael, myself, Herb Chu, Bunny Epperson, Bill Goff, Florrie Green, Barbara Luseich, and Joanne Tracy. The board's treasurer is Karen Hornan. The board's treasurer is Karen Hornan. This year, we welcomed over 70,000 visitors to the center. This is an increase of over 4,000 visitors from last year. It's one of the most popular senior centers on the peninsula and it's hard to find parking. The kitchen served almost 26,000 nutrition, nutritious meals. This is an increase of over 3,000 from last year. As you are aware, the lunch program is co-sponsored by San Mateo County through the Area Agency on Aging Grant Program, which provides partial funding as well as resources for nutritional education. This past year, we provided information and referrals for over 240 seniors. Requests are usually related to insurance, food sources, legal referral, social services, health and housing. Our transportation program transported over 2,000, 2,600 seniors from their homes to the center this year. This program is also co-sponsored by the San Mateo County Area Agency on Aging Grant. The total class and activities attendance this year was almost 60,000 people. Some of the most popular offerings include bingo, bocce ball, zumba, line dancing, hiking and exercise classes. The fastest growing activity at the moment is mahjong. The center provides the tile sets and groups of four find a table and play daily and they find a table wherever they could locate one. Over 140 seniors volunteered this year to help make the senior center vibrant and successful. Volunteers assist staff with the lunch program, the welcome desk, off-site trips, bingo and the sports programs. Without these volunteers, the senior center would not be able to provide the many programs and services that are currently offered. The nonprofit Nutrition Site Council continues to support the senior center with the annual monetary donation as well as sponsoring the daily entertainment and off-site trips, some off-site trips. They continue to run bingo each week in the popular coffee bar. Funding for the senior center comes from four sources. Cities General Fund, donations from the Nutrition Site Council, the County AAA Grant and the Senior Citizens Advisory Board Trust Fund. This year, we accomplished a few large projects. The synthetic bocce ball court received annual maintenance. During that maintenance, the park staff rebuilt the side rails for better performance. The Kitchen Island Butcher Block countertop was replaced with a stainless steel countertop. This will provide a more durable surface as well as a surface that is easier to keep sanitary. The kitchen range was replaced with a new range after approximately 30 years of use. It was replaced with the same make and model as before with a few upgrades. A few, a new food service coordinator was hired after extensive recruitment. Fabiola Cruz was hired for this position. She has 20 years of food experience. She is acclimating to the senior center culture incredibly well and has already served a few of her, few of her incredible recipes. So far, one of the favorites has been her homemade tomato soup paired with a tuna sandwich and I actually experienced that and it was very good. We are very excited to have her as a part of our team. Some of the other accomplishments this year include working with the Cappuccino Interact and Leadership Clubs for intergenerational activities. Holding a memorial bocce ball tournament in honor of longtime volunteer Ken Kreisel provided an emergency preparedness event with 168 people in attendance, celebrated the center's 32nd anniversary, coordinated Age Well Drive-Say Seminar, offered performances and demonstrations during the lunch program and held the annual volunteer recognition lunch to thank the volunteers. Some of the upcoming goals for, the goals for the upcoming year include offering a spouse-partner loss support, introducing new musical performances into the daily lunch program, working with the facilities division to implement the ADA Transition Plan, first year projects, working with Public Works to re-strike the parking lot, I can't wait for that, and construct a new trash enclosure. And then I had a personal note to address to you. I came to the senior center in 1994. That's 25 years ago. I'd been coming to the senior center, I can't believe it. After being downsized from my job as an accounts receivable supervisor at Cellarback in South San Francisco, I started with the walking program thinking I was so fit, but the 70 year olds proved me wrong and I thought I would have to be carried back. It was scary when I started my new life and I didn't think I would know anyone, but I felt welcomed here and started to make friends. I attained, I attended a computer club class and became involved in their newsletter for five years and also held office. My husband, who had Parkinson's disease, enjoyed playing bocce ball. There were only four seniors playing at the time and now there are three leagues each week. 18 years ago, I started escorting day trips. I learned to play bridge and that has opened a whole new world to me. Four years ago, I learned to play Pedro and enjoy that at least twice a week. I don't have time for the mahjong. I can't fit it into my life. I could go on and on, but feel that this center is not a place to come to after you retire to sit back and let people wait on you, but a place where we come to feel alive, learn and serve. Volunteering is hard work and sacrificial, but I'm sure we all have more stories to tell as to the benefits we have received in giving back to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Dorothy. Any questions from council? Or comment?
Dorothy, that was an excellent presentation. Thank you so much for your dedication and your volunteer and there's a lot of volunteers that make this, this program successful and I wish you much more success. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yeah, to echo what Laura said, A, thank you to you and the board and please convey that to the rest that aren't here this evening. But also thank you for ending with your story of when you arrived back in 1994 here, 25 years ago, and how it's evolved and developed. And I think when the senior center opened, one of its trademarks was that it was going to be kind of oversaw a little bit by its elected body, the senior advisory board, and it was really gonna be ran by the volunteers that really make it their second home. And that's really what I think gives it the, the passion and the love. And that's why, as we still look around this building that was opened back in 1987, it's still, is well-kept and maintained because of all those that come through here and want to make sure that their second home is just like their first. So thank you for all that you do and that you give back. And as you know, the senior advisory board and their funds help also offset some of the costs that go to the day-to-day things that you see and the improvements that happen. So this is truly an organization and a center that continues to give. So thank you on behalf of the council and we wish you the best and please pass on our thanks.